Evening and welcome to this regular council meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, February the first. I'm William Lutz, President of Council. We'll ask you to silence all electronic devices that you might have. This time, we will have the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, given by Mr. Phillips. Please.
Please bow your head. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the workers that have been out doing the various jobs to prepare our city for us to move around in a safe manner. And all the utility workers out there, please watch over them in these hazardous conditions. Watch over our safety workers, or EMS, or police, or fire that have to deal with hazardous areas, weather-related. Please watch over us this day. Thank you, and forgive us of our sins. Amen.
Thank you all. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Present.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Move to excuse Mr. Twist.
The move by Mr. Rozell to excuse Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, we please call the roll.
Mr. Schelling?
Yeah.
Yes, come here. Yes. Excusing, yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we please read a summary of the minutes of the January 19th, 2021 meeting of council.
Minutes of council, January 19th, 2021, committee report. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing subordinate loan agreement to Keystone Real Estate Group, LLC. Personnel Committee recommended the appointment of the city auditor to the ESID Board, and that was approved. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended an agreement related to a safety study along West Main Street from Maryville to I-75 North Fountain Rapids. Resolution R3, 2021, safety study was given first reading and was adopted. For December 06, 2021, subordinating mortgage lien for Keystone Real Estate Group was given first reading and was adopted, following various comments, council during the date 37.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schelling. Mrs. Knight, we please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move on to committee reports. We have four reports this evening. We will begin with the Buildings and Utilities Committee and Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
January 25th, this committee met to consider recommending bidding of the West Market Street State Route 55 waterline project. This project is a continuation of waterline replacement needs identified in the 2014 Watermaster Plan. The project is to install a new 16-inch line along State Route 55 from Barnhart Road to west of Horizon Court to add to the reliability of the system. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the West Market Street State Route 55 waterline project at a cost not to exceed $700,000. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Twilliger, Mr. Twist, and myself, Mr. Allen as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will move on to the Finance Committee and.
Mr. Schwayzer? Yes, we have one report tonight. On January 25th, this committee met to consider recommending bidding the mowing of the Miami Shores Golf Course rough. Contracting this part of the golf course maintenance has been done for the past 10 years and has been cost-effective. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing the Park Board of Commissioners to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the mowing of the Miami Shores Golf Course rough at an annual cost not to exceed $55,000 for a minimum of a three-year period. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schwayzer. Are there any comments or questions on this report? We'll move on to the final two reports this evening from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. On January 25th, committee members Snee and myself met to consider recommending acceptance of a number of easements associated with the West Main Street Quarter Improvement Project Phase One. Based on the project's scope discussed in the detailed report, there are a number of easement documents. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared to accept the easement shown on the attached list for the West Main Street Quarter Project Phase One and authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to record easements as necessary and to execute any documents related to the easements. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schelling, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Phillips, go ahead with your last report.
Also, committee members, Snee and I met on January 25th to review the proposed 2021 paving program. The program includes 26 roadway sections, as well as the repaving of roadways within Riverside Cemetery. The detailed report includes the funding for elements of the paving program and the list of street areas included in the program. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2021 paving program at a cost not to exceed $810,000. And this again is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schelling, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Moving on, we go to citizen comments on items on the agenda. We have three resolutions and one ordinance for discussion tonight. If you wish to speak on any of the resolutions or ordinances, please come to the microphone, give your name and address. You have two minutes to speak. Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, we please read Resolution R4, 2021.
Resolution number R4, 2021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2021 paving program, cost not to exceed $810,000 first reading.
How's council wishing to move on again?
Second.
The move is to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Schelling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to the second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R5, 2021?
Resolution number R5, 2021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the West Market Street State Route 55 Waterline Extension Improvement Project, cost not to exceed $700,000 first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved without the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schwayzer. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R6, 2021?
Resolution number R6, 2021. Resolution authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the mowing of the rough of Miami Shores Golf Course. This will be a multi-year contract not to exceed an annual payment of $55,000 first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to the second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We move on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, we please read Ordinance 07, 2021.
Ordinance number 07, 2021. Ordinance accepting easements associated with West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project Phase One. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schwayzer and seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schelling?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to communications and announcements, Mrs. Knight, are there any?
Just a reminder of filing a financial disclosure statement, that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have a special presentation tonight by Mr. Dennis Probst, Health Commissioner from Miami County Public Health. Mr. Probst, please come to the podium and take as much time as you need.
Mr. Lutz, President of Council, I'm Mr. Johnson-Mayer. Thank you very much for inviting me to come talk to you a little bit tonight about COVID response in Miami County and what we're doing moving forward. I'll talk you a little bit about the numbers. You know, so far in the county, we've had 9,480 cases, positive cases of COVID. We're far up 75 of those people in hospitals. 45373 ZIP Code, we've had over 3,300 of those. So a top third of them have been in the city of Troy. In November, it was about 40% of those. So over 1,000 of them in December, and around 1,500 in November. What we're seeing a lot is that, you know, the social distancing, the mask wearing, the washing of the hands, the simple things that we were, we asked the public to do in the holidays, and this isn't just in Troy or Miami County, but statewide and nationwide, is during the holidays that those kind of practices kind of went down the wayside because everybody wanted to see their families, spend time with friends and loved ones. And we've had breaks. The numbers spiked. They went through the roof, and they created a situation in which we're in right now. I hope to make it a little worse, actually. You know, we've been working for a month, for almost a year now, trying to get people to wear their masks, to wash their hands, to social distance. So I know I'm not going to change anybody's minds if they're not wearing a mask, if they're not social distancing, if they're not washing their hands anymore. You're not going to listen to me anymore. So you've made up your mind, you're going to do what you want to do. And thankfully, we're moving on to the next phase, which is our vaccination phase. And that's what I really wanted to focus this talk on, is our vaccination efforts and where we're at, what we're going to be doing moving forward. Because that's the positive news. That's the good news. That's that light at the end of this tunnel after this whole long, arduous year. We've got a glimmer of hope. We got that light. Today, 6,593 people have been vaccinated in the county. That's about 6% of the population. But in that, 43% of those 80 years old and over have been vaccinated, and about 16%, 70 and 79-year-olds. Miami County has done about 2,700 of those vaccinations, the other coming from Premier and Kroger, and a little bit from Kettering. Those are other providers here in the county that are providing the vaccinations. We started off with the 1A, which is the medical workers, first responders, the people who are on the front lines battling the COVID virus. Those people, they were somewhat receptive to the vaccine. And there's a lot of hesitancy with the vaccine. And on the surface, I can understand why. Everybody thinks that vaccine was ruptured, right? And it is, and it isn't. One of the big things everybody complains about about government is bureaucracy and the red tape. What they did with that program was remove a lot of the bureaucracy and move a lot of the red tape. And another big thing, and another big hurdle with the development of any new drugs or vaccination is the capital expenditure upfront to do the research and to develop the drug. The government stood in that bill. They wrote a huge check to these pharmaceutical manufacturers, and they told them, look, once you get the, start making, even before you get through the trials, start making that product. When it, if it's successful, we'll buy it. If it's not successful, we'll buy it, throw it away. So that risk aversion that a lot of pharmaceutical companies run into was eliminated. So the vaccine, the vaccines were developed. They were developed just like every other vaccine, just like every other drug in the United States. But they were done, it was a dual timeline with the development and the production going on at the same time. You know, so we have two, two, and then the messenger RNA, the messenger RNA, you know, that's going to change my DNA makeup. It's going to change a lot of things. Everybody thinks it's a new technology. It's been around for years as well. They started developing this many years ago.
I apologize.
Come on down. You're the next contestant.
So that was the vote many years ago, actually, in response to the SARS outbreak. But the service lined up and went away. So here, the vaccine manufacturers are on this technology, all are on this, this research, but with nothing to use it on. And, you know, COVID is a SARS virus. So they had the blueprint, they had the ready-to-go. It was, okay, we know how to build a car. We just don't know how the engine's going. So, you know, yes, it was done very fast, but it was, there was reasons behind that. Then we opened up the 1Bs, and oh my God, the floodgates opened. We couldn't get that vaccine in the building and out of the building fast enough. Today, we started with 70 and over, and we've got a clinic planned for the fairgrounds on Friday. Unfortunately, all those slots are full. Next Monday, 65 and over, they're up. And on the 15th, those with severe cognitive issues and congenital defects as well will be on that list. Also, on February, the schools come up. Some of them went this week. Unfortunately, none of the schools in Miami County were on the list for February 1st. Miami County schools are on the list to be vaccinated on February, the week of February 22nd. The health department will not be doing any of those vaccinations. Premier and Kroger are the providers that are going to be providing those services to the school districts in Miami County. And that does a couple of things, you know, it frees us up to focus in on the other populations. And the other populations that are really at risk, the 65 and overs. So we're really excited about where we are moving forward and how this vaccination is really going to change the face of what's going on. Show of hands, who here likes wearing these masks?
Take it off.
See, I wear mine to protect everybody else. You know, you wouldn't ask a surgeon to perform surgery without a mask. You know, it's simple respect for the people in the community and the people we live with every day. You know, nobody likes wearing this mask, but the sooner we do all of this, the sooner we all can stop wearing this mask. The sooner we can all stop.
Continue, Mr. Probst. If you're not at the podium, you shouldn't be speaking. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Probst.
You know, the sooner we can all get over this, you know, that's, that's our goal. You know, our goal from the get-go is to try to get through this pandemic. So I would be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you. I see these graphs here talking about, talking about the amount of cases and things of that nature. Is there anything, any data showing recovery rate, amount of people that have recovered from this?
Yeah, the recovery rate, I mean, you can, it's on the Ohio Department of Health's website, list the recovery rate. You just, it's simple. You stress about 8,700 thereabouts.
It's. Out of how many cases?
9,480. It's a product of the number of cases minus the number of hospitalizations, minus the number of deaths, and a 28-day period. So.
Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? Mrs. Snee?
I'm just curious, Mr. Probst, do you know the ICU capacity in Miami County at our hospital?
As far as the number of beds?
Right.
I don't have a good number. It's, because they've changed that with some surge capacity. But in Miami County, we don't have very many beds. It's around 10, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Shouldn't you know that?
Can you explain what the vaccine adverse event reporting system is?
Good question.
Yes, sir. The vaccine adverse event reporting system has been around for probably 40 years, plus years. It's a, it's a government agency that if there is an adverse event, regardless of what it is, it gets reported to that agency to be monitored as part of the safeness of the vaccine.
So what agency is that that's monitoring this? Is that you?
No, no.
Okay. Who is that? A federal agency?
Yes.
So are we keeping track of that in Ohio?
Yes, through that.
Through them, but not through the federal agency, not through you?
We give reports, and we tell them, because that's the clarinets.
Have you had any reports from Miami County?
No major, plenty of minor. I had minor symptoms, and I had my second ones.
You're not at the podium, you shouldn't be speaking. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Probst.
Well, if any of the council members or mayor has any further questions or needs anything of me, you know, have my contact information, do not hesitate. I thank you for your time, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to comments. Mayor?
Good evening. I do not have any comments tonight.
Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tidrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very quickly.
Sir, refer.
The.
You said, "watch it."
Thank you, Captain. The next holiday is President's Day. That is February 15th, which will be a council meeting. So that will be on the 16th. We are off. The city building is closed, but we will collect trash and recycling on the regular day. That is all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tidrington. Director of Law, Mr. Cover?
I have no comments this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Friggin's not here. We'll move on to council members. Do any council members have any comments this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Lutz, if I may.
Mr. Schwayzer?
I would like to thank the city crews that were out all night Saturday night, plowing the streets and spreading salt. And we were out Saturday or Sunday morning driving around, had to go with our grandkids, and the streets were very passable. And that was at 10 o'clock, and by the time we took the kids home, they were in really good shape. And I think they're still in good shape tonight. So my thanks to the road crews.
Thank you, Mr. Schwayzer.
I would agree, and even the low-level, after the primary and secretary, the last roads were efficiently and quickly taken care of as well.
And Mr. Twilliger?
That corner, young ladies, Pledge of Allegiance, knocked out good.
Any other comments from council members? Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Moving on to comments from the audience. Any staff members? Any staff members have any comments this evening? We'll move on to audience comments. If you wish to address council on any topic, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to continue.
I'm from this, 821 and Road Drive, Baton. I wasn't planning on speaking last meeting, and I was hoping I wasn't going to have to speak this time, too, because I honestly hate speaking in front of people. But I am thankful for the opportunity to do so, because I feel this matter is serious and needs to be addressed. As I said, I'm not from Troy, but what happens here decides the fate of the community as a whole. So during 2020, I feel the health department has sold nothing but fear, and when that didn't work, they harassed and intimidated businesses to comply with their orders. In fact, the health department decided to come here and try and persuade the city of the importance of the PPE. However, I'd like to discuss the health department role in this. On January 23rd, 2020, they state in a published order it was a reportable Class A medical disease. After repeated alarm from the community, the first reported case in Ohio was discovered on November 14th by investigative journalist Jack Windsor. WHIO also did a story and discovered that the COVID reached Miami County on January 7th. But even with the health department now involved, they failed to notify Ohioans of the pandemic had reached the U.S. and into the communities until March 9th. For being alert to the pandemic, tests and kits did not come available until March. Then there were the tests themselves. People have reported not going through the test, still getting results. People who tested received conflicting results. Even the governor, Dewine himself, tested at two different locations the same day with two different results. Yet no one at the health department says, let's stop testing and determine where is the issue? Are they getting messed up with the testing? Are they getting messed up with the testing process, or are the tests themselves contaminated? How do you trust numbers? It's a very foundation is faulty. The numbers, of which they provide, over eleven million people in Ohio have reported the number of cases of seven hundred eighty thousand nine hundred eighty-two, equating to roughly six point seven percent of Ohioans have contracted COVID. On April fourteenth, twenty twenty, CDC counts and counts include both confirmed and probable causes and which means that one doesn't even have to be tested to fall into this category. It also appears there's no count for individuals who receive a multiple test in order for them to be considered clear before they go back to work, before they go back to school. So you do test. But let's talk about masks, since that was the reason why I started here. During the height of pandemic, Depp, Fauci, and other health experts stated that only those that are sick or caring for a sick should wear a mask. Yet here we are in 2021, with a fear sold about asymptomatic spread from talking and singing, a position that the CDC has changed its stance on numerous times. But in 2019, science used to say the virus is spread through cough and sneeze. Even the Health Department orders signed by Dr. Attick stated that was how COVID was spread, which was important that if you are sick, you might want to wear masks. But it was lots of times that people used to cover their mouth and their nose with their sleeve. But now the Health Department wants us to believe that the mask is a saving grace. That over ninety percent of Ohioans have been wearing them since July twenty-third, and yet cases have jumped during the cold and flu season. But what is a case? It's a person who tested positive, who may or not even experience symptoms. But the test was repeatedly proven faulty, and those cases with symptoms include symptoms that are found with the flu, because that's what most of the COVID symptoms are, are very similar to the flu. Does the Health Department care about anything besides COVID? Rather than the emotional and psychological health of an individual or the children who are being conditioned to keep your distance, don't look at somebody in the eyes. For me personally, I am forced to postpone medical care due to the mandates that put me back in line to enter a facility. I'm neglecting my own health because of the COVID policies right now, not because of the disease. But you know who, what we should care about? Something that even Imiak admitted she didn't know about, the Constitution of the United States. You know who cares about the Constitution? The men and women who sacrificed their life, liberty, and limbs for our rights and our freedoms, our natural, God-given rights. The other people who should care about the Constitution are the elected officials who represent the people who swear and support and defend the Constitution. We do not live in a totalitarian society. Americans have liberties and used to have the right to make autonomous medical decisions for ourselves, as well as the basic decisions of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Now the Health Department wants us to ask them permission before we can enter a establishment. Not only do we have to carry around documentation that we're medically exempted, but have repeatedly been discriminated against and prevented entrance into several businesses, and that list is growing. If we allow this to continue, is that the country we are? Is that the town that Troy wants to become? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please go forward, give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Shirley Harshman. I live at twenty-four forty-five Choice City Road. I'm not a fancy speaker by any means, but I'm sure that the graph that you have there shows that the cases went up this winter. But might, might I add to you, every winter, there's more sickness. And part of that reason is because of how we eat and what we do in our activities. Come October, guess what we have? We have Halloween. Lots of candy, lots of sugary snacks, lots of bad eating. Come November, what, what do we have? We have Thanksgiving. We eat differently sometimes in the winter. We eat more sugars, we eat more candies. We have more stress because of the holidays. We don't get outside. We don't exercise like we should, and we don't get the sun. So, you know, I'd like for you to consider that when you see that chart that those cases went up. Plus, most of those are false cases. I'm very glad that I'm a non-master of belief and the right of freedom and liberty. And I'm proud that you guys have actually let us have the exemptions that we do. And I pray that you continue to do so. It's a choice. You know, anybody, you have women that go in for abortions, you know? Well, with the mask, I feel like it's my body, my choice. Thank you.
I did not plan on speaking at all today. I just wanted to-
We need your name and address, please.
Sorry, Jessica Hartman. I'm actually from Keverly, Ohio. How are we not able to understand about vaccine dangers? Jessica, two ten Kaiser Lane in Troy, Ohio. Just to correct my friend Jessica up here. The study was commissioned by Harvard Pilgrim, and they, they studied the various adverse event, the vaccine adverse event reporting system to find that one percent or fewer of vaccine injuries as a whole, so even like the polio vaccine, things that we take. Those things cause things like anaphylaxis, swelling in the arm, things like that. Only one percent of those are ever reported. That also includes what's happening with the COVID vaccine. As of three days ago, almost eleven thousand adverse events have been reported in the United States. I know, this is just a conversation between everybody today, but all of us here in the room fear that down the line, the government might find a way to mandate these things. So this is something that we're all very concerned about. And I think the reason why we're all here today is just to monitor what the Health Department is saying versus what the actual data say. I'm personally very concerned about probable cases, things like fever, cough, fatigue. You don't have the test for these things to be listed as a case on, on the CSB files of Miami County. Just a personal anecdote, my grandmother tested positive, gosh, sometime last year, with an actual swab by her doctor. Out of nowhere, my grandpa's doctor calls him unsolicited and lets him know that he's going to be listed as a case in Miami County. That disturbs me, because he didn't even call his doctor complaining of any symptoms, and he actually isn't having it all. They lived together, they, they quarantined together, they didn't sleep in separate beds, and his own doctor called him. And he was now listed as a case despite never receiving medical care or even a test. So, you know, I respect what the Health Department is trying to do here. I understand that a lot of people are very fearful of this virus. But I just wish that we were provided more information. I feel it's very unacceptable that he came here today not knowing how many beds are in the ICU. It's really upsetting to me. When you want to say things like it's forty percent occupied, what happens if there's ten beds? That means four people and all of Miami County are in the hospital. You know, a lot of us are just very frustrated that we're not receiving full information in percentages and, and per thousand kind of remarks, just like undermine what we're feeling, just very frustrated that we're not being given the whole data. So anyways, that's just all.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Reed, forty-one thirty, Menon Avenue, Big Wheel, Ohio. It's very, I'm going to keep it real simple here. The words COVID nineteen, health mandates, masks, social distancing, and vaccines, and trying to find a common denominator there. And the scientific evidence is overwhelming that this is is being used for political reasons. So I'm here to state that the majority of people here in Troy, Ohio, do not want to wear a mask. So as council members here, it's your duty as to listen to the citizens. And one of the examples I'd say is when, when you're a child, you, you cross the street, you're, you're instructed to look both ways. I feel that the issue here is looking just on one side here, including the person who spoke here this evening. I was just totally against what that person had to say. What was it? Dennis Probst, I'll put that on record. And then there's other, the, the masking. I have a medical exemption to not wear a mask. And I'm, I'm sticking up for all the other people out there who have issues with that. And according to our ADA and other, you know, constitutional things that the, the local community should be, you know, observing those. So that's why I do have a federal lawsuit filed here in Ohio against the governor and the Health, the Health Department, which will come down to the Health Department here. So I have issues with the Health Department here in Miami County. And then the last thing I'd like to say is, in Lubbock, Texas, they have the same thing here. And they filed a cease and desist order against mask wearing. I hope it doesn't come to that. But that would be the next on the agenda here. We're not going to give up here of this mask thing and the vaccines as well. I mean, as a mandated thing. If they, if the people want to have that, that would be fine, but not for, it's not one size fits all. So I just want to- And I still think, again, this is a, a matter of, 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 of God thing, and God we trust. And I'm telling you, I hope that we can bring justice here and bring, bring Venus peacefully. So we're here to be a peaceful.
Hi, everybody. My name is- Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jessica Franz, and my address is forty-two eighty-five U.S. Route forty, Tip City, Ohio. And I came here tonight prepared to speak a little bit about masks, because I thought that was going to be kind of the, the conversation. And I understand that Mr. Probst was already here and left, which is unfortunate, because I had some questions that I really wanted to ask him tonight, some questions that I need answers to. So hopefully there will be another opportunity to, to address him in another, another meeting. So I am someone who has a religious exemption. And most of the time, the reaction I get to that are people who raise their eyebrows, scoff at me, laugh, want to know if I have a note from a pastor, and I've had that asked, want to drill me on my church, drill me in my entire religious experience. I can tell you, I have never in my life asked somebody about their personal religious convictions, even if I did not, or attacked them, rather, I gave, asked questions, trying to understand. But I've never attacked them, or laughed at them, or mocked them, because they weren't the convictions that I myself espoused. So for example, I may not agree with a Muslim woman who chooses to wear hijab. I may not agree with or understand it. I may not understand why a Sikh chooses to wear a turban. I may not understand why certain people have dietary regulations, why they choose not to eat certain meats or abstain from, from certain foods. But that is their personal right. That's their personal religious conviction. I respect them and not to leave that between them and the God that they serve. The God that I serve, Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior, has been very clear with me from the beginning that I'm not to participate in the mask. I'm not to do it. And I don't feel like I need to give a three-page explanation on why that is. Additionally, I have children with documented medical, medical exemptions. And even with those, we have been kept out of businesses. And yes, even here in the Miami, Miami County, we've been kept out of businesses. We live right on the border of Miami and Montgomery County. And usually, I find that businesses here are more accommodating within Miami County than they are in Montgomery County. And that's a really great thing for my family, where we have both religious reasons and medical reasons for not wearing masks. And I appreciate the respect that I'm given when I enter a store. And I may be asked to wear a mask, but I'm never, usually in Miami County, told that I can't do business, they can't do business with me because I am not wearing a mask. So I like that. I like that this is a community where we respect each other's religious convictions and reasons, health reasons for choosing not to wear a mask. So with that being said, I'm not a doctor, but I do know how to read, and a little common sense does go a long way. So I just want to spend a little time tonight just talking about masks and asking some questions. And if you guys have some answers or something you'd like to share, please feel free to jump in. I'd love to hear, hear from you. So the first thing is, if the masks do protect against the COVID virus, why does every box of ear-lute mask come with a disclaimer that it doesn't protect you against the COVID virus or other contaminants? The holes in the mask measure a hundred microns, right? The SARS-two COVID virus measures one-tenth of a micron. So the virus will flow over, around, and through your mask. Again, I'm not a doctor, I'm just using some simple reasoning, logic, critical thinking skills here. The original purpose of the surgical mask is to prevent drooling into wound or bloods and fluids from getting on the surgeon. It was never designed to prevent anyone from getting a virus. In fact, I believe this is the first time this has ever been, a surgical mask has been used in this way. Eighty-six percent of all COVID deaths come from individuals that are sixty-five and over. Of all those diagnosed with COVID, the percentage who live over sixty-five is ninety-two percent. Under sixty-five, the percentage of diagnosed cases who live is ninety-nine percent. It's very survivable in both age groups. And it is interesting to note that the total mortality rate for 2020 is less than the three preceding years, 2019, 2018, and 2017. The biggest casualties during this, during this pandemic, in my opinion, and I believe in the opinions of many others, has been our economy, our small businesses, and our young people. Drug overdoses, suicides, domestic violence, child abuse have all dramatically increased as a direct result of unconstitutional emergency orders. And I'm not really sure why we aren't talking about that right now. The curve that was supposed to take two weeks to flatten has now taken over ten months. State of emergencies don't usually last for close to a year, do they? And our constitutional natural born rights have now been suspended indefinitely. I'd like to reference some peer-reviewed mass studies for medical professionals here, and just read a few of these to you. And if any of you would like these copies, there's probably about, I don't know, between twenty and thirty pages of studies here. I'm just going to read a few tonight. The first one is from New England Journal of Medicine. "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little if any protection from infection. Public health authorities define a significant exposure to COVID nineteen as face-to-face contact within six feet with a patient with symptomatic COVID nineteen that is sustained for at least a few minutes. And some say more than ten minutes or even thirty minutes. The chance of catching COVID nineteen from a passing interaction in a public space is therefore minimal. In many cases, the desire for widespread masking is a reflexive reaction to anxiety over the pandemic." And that's from the New England Journal of Medicine. Another one is coming from the CDC. "The purpose of this study was to," it was a study that they did, "community and close contact exposures associated with COVID nineteen among symptomatic adults whose ages are greater than eighteen years in eleven outpatient healthcare- among symptomatic adults whose ages are greater than 18 years in 11 outpatient healthcare facilities." And this was done in July of 2020. "The purpose of this study was to identify risk factors associated with COVID-19 in a national survey conducted by the CDC and collaborating hospitals. This study did not find a significant difference in mask-wearing behaviors between people who tested positive for COVID-19 versus those who did not. Of the people who tested positive, 70.6% reported always wearing a mask versus 74.2% of those that tested negative. Among those who reported never wearing a mask, 3.9 tested positive for COVID-19 versus 3.1 who tested negative." And another study here from the, let's see, effectiveness of adding a mask recommendation to other public health measures to prevent SARS-CoV-2 infection in the Danish mask wearers. This was the Danish mask-wearing study that they tried. Had been suppressed for quite some time, but it finally came out and it was a randomized controlled trial. "As stated in the title, this was a randomized controlled trial in Denmark to assess whether recommending surgical mask use outside the home reduces wearers' risk for SARS-CoV-2 infection. The primary outcome of SARS-CoV-2 infection was defined as a positive result on a nasal swab test for SARS-CoV-2, development of a positive SARS-CoV-2 antibody test during the study period, or a hospital-based diagnosis of SARS-CoV-2 infection or COVID-19. And the study found no significant difference in that composite endpoint between the mask-wearing group and the non-mask-wearing group. The difference was insignificant, .38 is the difference there." Do any of you have a bottle of water that you'd be willing to part with?
Thanks, Barbie.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
All right, so again, if you want these studies, I'll send, I can email them to you to look over for yourself. Researchers at RationalBrown.com, a clearinghouse of COVID-19 data trends run by a grassroots group of data analysis, computer scientists and actuaries did an analysis of all 50 states divided by those that had mask mandates and those that did not. And I want to show that to you here because what they found was they did a study of all 50 states during days with and without a state mask mandate. And if you look at this graph here, and I can pass this around, they showed that with the mask mandate, they actually, there was actually an increase. And the number of cases per day with the no-mask mandate, there were 17 cases per day per 100,000 people for states with no-mask mandate in place. For those with, it was 27 people per 100,000. So if you want to take a look at that, I can, I can pass this around. And let me see. "When comparing states with mandates versus those without, or periods of time within a state with a mandate versus without, there's absolutely no evidence that the mask mandate worked to slow the spread one iota. In total, in the states that had a mandate, in fact, there were 9,605,256 confirmed COVID cases over 5,907 total days, an average, again, like I said, of 27 per cases per 100,000 when states did not have a statewide order, which includes the states that never had them and the period, I'll read that. There were 5,781, 716 cases over 5,772 total days, averaging 17 cases per 100,000 people per day." Secondly, I also wanted to point out here that July 23rd, which was the start of the mask mandate in Ohio, the cases actually increased. At the end of July, this was taken from the Health Department here, Ohio Health Department, there was 156,809 cases, okay? That was the start of the mask mandate. By the end of November, there was 267,356 cases. So if there is a mask mandate, we're getting higher numbers, doesn't that tell you that maybe the masks aren't working? In Miami County, and this is why I wish Mr. Probst was here, because these were some questions that I would have really liked to address with him tonight. But in Miami County, and maybe he already went over this with you. There, and this data was taken from January 13th, 2021 through January 26th, so pretty recent. And there were 669 confirmed cases, 158 probable cases. And of the numbers being used, 24% were probable. Okay, 24% is not confirmed cases. And furthermore, the question, and I'm not going to take a lot, I've already been up here too long, but the question of the reliability of the PCR test really comes in. That's a whole other discussion. When the inventor of the test himself admitted that they were never to be used to diagnose disease. Okay, so I'm going to just pass this around to you guys to take a look at. So there are no scientific studies showing that a masked public can stop a virus. The Health Department has failed to provide the public with any actual evidence that masks can stop a virus. And again, I would welcome that evidence from Mr. Probst if he has it. There is a current lawsuit in the federal court in Ohio that's demanding that the state of Ohio actually provide the evidence used to justify their mask mandates. And so far, they have refused to provide that science. If the masking policy were based on science, that policy would certainly cite the evidence, I would hope, of the effectiveness of masking healthy people in public settings to prevent the spread of SARS-CoV-2. And without that evidence, mask policies are nothing more than superstition or religious practice. Are you citing evidence? This would be a question for the Health Department. Or are you just referring to some agency order that refers to yet another agency? And I don't really know what the purpose of Mr. Probst's presentation was here tonight. I don't know if it was too much for some kind of a citywide mask mandate. But again, what are you wanting to accomplish when you provided no evidence that masks can stop a virus? If that's what he was hoping to accomplish tonight. There is already a statewide mask mandate in place with exemptions, as you all know, listed in the orders. And all a citywide mask mandate would serve to do is create division within the community and further isolate and alienate those such as myself who have already experienced more discrimination since I started than I have in my entire life. And it's really given me appreciation, a new appreciation for those that have suffered discrimination. And I have, can actually say that I know a little bit about what that's like now, and so do my children. It's, yeah. So furthermore, if the people declaring a public health emergency have been doing so continuously for a year now, don't you think it's time to admit that you're either incompetent to solve the problem or there isn't an emergency and you're creating one where none exists? So that's pretty much all I've got. Thank you guys for your time.
Hello. My name's Heather Chapel. I live at 11044 Girl Law Road in Midland, Ohio. Since the topic at hand this evening from the gentleman at the Health Department, who coincidentally left before questions, was vaccinations. I would just like to speak briefly on the COVID vaccination and some facts that I have been made aware of. First, the vaccination hasn't been studied to prevent transmission. It has only been studied and proven to lessen symptoms. So basically what that means is, right now, all the talk about asymptomatic spreaders, once you receive the vaccination, it does not mean you will not get COVID-19. It means your symptoms will be less. So my question to everyone who's getting the vaccination is, when you have COVID-19, if you survive the vaccination, are you going to be spreading that? Because you don't have symptoms because that vaccination has lessened your symptoms? With that being said, I would like to also talk about the PREP Act. The PREP Act allows emergency vaccination because there are no treatments. It also makes the vaccination 100% liability-free. All the makers are liability-free. They don't have to pay anything. They don't have to reimburse anybody for damages from this vaccination. So let's talk a second about prophylactics or treatments. Ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine have both been proven by multiple doctors to work in the treatment of COVID-19. Zinc, curcumin, neonatosysteine, D3, high doses of vitamin C, which can be taken safely to bowel tolerance. You can do vitamin C intravenously. There are numerous amounts of things that you can do to help prophylactically protect you from this, as well as the hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin, which ironically enough, I just sold tonight at Tractor Supply Company in the horse section, just so you know. The other thing that I wanted to touch on, the gentleman who was here with the Health Department, he spoke about how the vaccination wasn't rushed, and this is something that's been studied for years. He is correct in that. I have an article here pulled up. This is about a study from the SARS coronavirus vaccine that they were researching for the SARS virus that emerged in 2002. And they didn't want it to spread to other countries before it was brought under control. It was their first time experimenting with mRNA vaccinations. In those trials, they successfully prevented the animals from getting the virus. It appeared that that vaccination was working with the mRNA. However, a majority of the animals in those trials died when they were exposed to the wild virus. All vaccinations were ordered to stop because the mRNA was not safe. This COVID vaccine has completely skipped any and all animal studies. If there are previous studies of an mRNA vaccination on animals and the animals died, why are we using our elderly and nursing homes and soon to be our children as guinea pigs? And I would like for that man that was sitting in that chair right there to answer that question. And I would also like to ask him why he left so abruptly and he didn't stick around to eat. These people in the Health Department don't seem to know all their facts. I understand that they are taught by the pharmaceutical industry and that they get their facts from the people who pay them. But they need to start looking at other studies and paying attention to what we are doing to our children and their children yet to come. Our babies may not have babies because we are not asking questions and we are not paying attention to what we are doing. None of this is okay, none of it. This is not the America that I was born into. And I refuse to stand back and allow my children to have to live in an America like this. My grandfather and several other grandfathers and grandmothers laid their lives on the line for our country so that our children and we could experience the freedoms of being able to say yes or no. They fought for our First Amendment rights, our Second Amendment rights. And every day, we are losing those and people are laying down and letting it happen. This has got to stop now, and it starts right here. You cannot force a medical device or treatment on me or my children. It's not okay.
Hi, my name is Joe Geralmo, 232 South Club Street, and I actually do live in Troy. Some members of council know I had no plans on speaking here tonight. I have a completely different agenda. But after listening to what everybody said tonight, first, I will say I agree with what everybody said. And in fact, I had a COVID test back in December, tested positive. I had no symptoms. Everybody I came in contact with, some of them had tests, they had false, no tests. Their test came back negative. So everybody that I was in contact with on a regular basis, nobody got sick. So I'm curious if my test was accurate or not. But what I do want to remind everybody that's here is I have been at the last couple of meetings, including the one at the very beginning of January, where this situation developed at this meeting. And I appreciate all the comments that everybody has said. And it allows all of them to get their comments in a public forum with a public record. But I am not aware that this body is considering any legislation or is even, has the power or capability to enact any kind of legislation. So I thank all of you for your patience and listening to all these comments. And have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg Banios. I live at 2650 Newcastle Drive in Troy. And first time at one of these. Thanks for everybody that's been speaking. So many things that a person can say, I didn't come prepared to actually say anything in particular. But I think the biggest problem we've got going on in the whole, this whole situation with the virus that came upon this country about a year ago, and how we responded to it. Americans trust that their government really does look out for them and really does have it together, you know, somewhat. And if they don't, it's really good if they're honest about it because all it does is build less trust when they're not. They have not backed, the Health Department and whoever else, they have not backed up a standard for these, for this test. You know, people have symptoms, they don't have symptoms. They're, they're testing positive, they're testing negative. It's really irrelevant. It, what it is, are you shedding virus or not? Are you contagious? And if the test doesn't help with that, then all it does is cause confusion. And then here we are, some people are happy because, oh, we're documenting cases, you know? But how many people are dying? Has that gone up or down? How many tests are we doing? How many tests are we not doing? How many cases do we have? How many cases do we not have? It's all confusing and we don't have any standard that actually gives us something to stand on. It's crazy. And that's what the Health Department needs to do for citizens. So what we need you to do is to get on your case and say, hey, give us a standard we can adhere to that we can know we got what we need so that we can stay healthy or not healthy. Does the mask work or not? Well, obviously, you know, they, you know, if you like it, great. If you don't, great. There's just enough statistics to show that it can go either way. There's just enough statistics to show that it can go either way. And, ah, I get passionate. So the bottom line really, though, when you get right down to it, in this country, the supreme law of the land is the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of Ohio, and all the individual states. And there is nothing in there that allows for a health emergency. If you want to get the people together and say, hey, we got a health problem, we need to do something, what would you like us to do? Or we think we should do this, what's your, what do you say? You know, well, then, look, do that. But don't just come in here like a little emperor or a king or something and tell us what to do. And, you know, not you, but, you know, somebody, anybody that does that, that's wrong. You know, we're not stupid. We're intelligent people, and you are too, and you know how to watch out for your own life. You know, you know how to take precautions. If you're sick, you stay home. If you're not sick, okay. But we have killed our economy. Thousands of people are out of work. People have committed suicide. We have people that are committing spousal abuse because they're being driven crazy. It's insane that we're doing this to our people in this country. So if you want to do something to help, then get on these people above, you know, quote-unquote "above" us, and get, hold their feet to the fire, you know? And we, we need to be on our state reps, and on our representatives in the state capital, because I'm telling you right now, the federal government, your voice doesn't amount to a hill of beans to them, but it can in the state. So anyway.
That's P22.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'm meeting adjourned. Next meeting will be February 16th, 7 o'clock right here. We will have a work session, February 8th, 6 o'clock on the Door District, right here, 6 o'clock.